Okay, we are going to start our post-meeting Parks Recreation Open Space and Trail Advisory Board Meeting for June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Just a reminder for everybody that's here, we are recorded. If everybody can state your first and last name for roll calls. Lauren Bachman.
Job Evans.
Robert Sossman.
Thank you. First, we will start, oh, we are missing tonight, we are missing Erin McConnell.
Yep, and there's a chance that he might zoom in and he has the ability to.
Okay, okay. And then our trustee liaison is not able to make it tonight, correct?
Potentially.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, a public comment on non-agenda items.
Sure. Yeah, we normally didn't like to raise any money or have any fundraisers on Memorial Weekend, but the Veterans Memorial Park was the perfect thing, the perfect reason to do that. So we had a pancake breakfast. We didn't have a lot of notice, but we did raise a little bit of money. We were wishing there was a couple more zeros on the check, but there isn't. I think the biggest thing was we raised a little more awareness for you guys. I'd be surprised if eighty or ninety percent of people don't even know you guys are doing this. So I think we kind of gave that a little bit of a boost hopefully. And then you guys are talking about putting a booth in the Fourth of July beer. I think they'll have to for awareness. Anyway, I just want to give these guys a chance.
Oh, wow. Exciting.
It's fantastic.
What can we do better to help?
Yeah.
Other thoughts on awareness?
You know, I was talking to guys this afternoon and I was telling him about it, he goes, I never heard anything about it. He goes, how would I know about it? You have to go to me. Well, the first time I heard about it was John giving a speech a year or two ago. And that was the only time I heard about it before you guys started, I started coming here and you guys talked about it quite a bit, but I don't know how to, I think that'll help the Beer Garden tent. And maybe even raise some money, have a donation bucket out, do something to generate a few more funds for you too.
I wish I would have known about your pancake breakfast, so we come and help out.
And it's the hard thing too, how do you advertise and how do you reach everyone?
Yeah.
That's, we always struggle with that.
We had a good time, my boys were there and we found a place.
Well, you got my number, if something comes up, let me know, I always try to get out, help out.
Okay.
At least attend things, you know, and get okay, so definitely let me know.
Fourth of July beer.
I'll be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll be right next door.
All right, well, thank you, I think this speaks a lot to, you know, the work that Prost has done, but also the partnerships that we're trying to create and then, you know, to give back to, not just monetarily, but presence and just being able to be here and talking with us and helping us understand the totality of the situation and the project. I think it's going to be instrumental that everybody is involved, this is the community project, right, this is something we're going to do with everybody. We've spoken about it in these meetings as well, like it's Prost's plan and we're trying to have a vision, but we do need the input and we want the input. We're not just here to look for the monetary donations that are going to get the project CAD drawings, to renderings, to, you know, earthwork, all this stuff, we're looking for long-term support and help and community gathering spaces so that we can not just use it, but take care of it together, so. Thank you so much and thanks for being a great partner and helping promote it is huge. And we think we all kind of struggle, most communities, most, everything struggles combining what we can do with social media and the flyers and the pamphlets and getting it out there, so. Any little step in the right direction is huge.
How many donations do you have for the park?
For that? Come on. It's good, this is, this is the start.
Kicking it off, yeah.
You know, it's just the first drop in the bucket.
We've got things for the silent auction.
Yeah.
That are happening.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, so we have other donations, I guess, yes, that will turn into right, more proceeds for the project moving forward.
When's this at lunch?
The Fourth, the Fourth of July, what were you, yeah, what you're speaking of. And I, I do have people that are ready to donate, but we just need that concrete number of like, this is what costs are going to be, we need to get some of the surveying and all that. But once we have that engineering and that other level, I do have a few people that are willing, they just want to know, you know, exactly what that's going to contribute to the project.
Yep.
And they're just not, you know.
Yeah.
Able to write like a check and just send it in, but they are willing to do something down the line, I just, we need to get to that level, to that, that point first.
I've got a master plan factor into that as far as awareness, master plan that you're trying to get. I've been trying to get.
So, and we'll talk about this a little bit, but the master plan probably won't, I mean, I don't know how much it's going to incorporate this project. It probably won't, hopefully we'll, hopefully we'll be into this project and dirt work and I don't know if we'll have the concrete laid by the time that we do this, it would be great to be able to. But the master plan itself will, that'll take time into next year, if, you know, if it gets funded, as we'll speak about. But it'll, you know, if we get this project and we move forward with it, it'll be one idea and one space that we can gather in and, you know, having that will be a great springboard for other projects that the master plan maybe will dictate, you know, they might kind of share an avenue towards other things that the master plan does. Does that make sense? I don't know, this is kind of a roundabout way of saying, I don't, I don't think this will be in the master plan specifically, but.
The plan is not going to hold this up. We are, we are going.
Yeah, yeah, the plan will hold this up. The plan is like the long-term vision and combining everything that Prost has worked on in the past and actually identifying the projects that kind of bring the two together, what the community needs as well as what the pros pretty much has identified and just kind of pushing those priorities to the front so that it's easier to kind of say, you know, for instance, like we need more pickleball or we need a dog park on the east side, or we want more basketball on the east side, Prost has identified that stuff. But if the master plan really says like, yeah, walkability, kids on the east side can't play basketball, so that goes really high on the list because the master plan dictated that, then we can say, okay, that's where our priority is going to the board to say we need funding for this because we have that long-term vision rather than just the pieces of what, what the Parks Board and now the Prost Board have been working on.
You also mentioned maybe having a sign up over there by Fourth of July.
Yes.
I think that would really help too.
There, in there will be, for sure.
And once we get to the point where there might be community involvement, I can help out a little bit with that. I do know some people that probably would get involved, even as far as construction goes and put hands in mud and whatever needs to be done. So I can, I can reach out to some people when it comes to that point.
Yeah.
Quite a few.
Yeah, we'll, we'll kind of see where that, that tails into with who is actually doing the work.
Yeah.
But options, right, this is a community project, it's the grassroots, we can potentially look for grants, we're going to do that, but in the meantime, we're going to hit the ground running, so.
Do we have the ability to create like a dedicated Facebook page or group for this?
I don't know about a Facebook page, but once we kind of get the, I think we spoke about this as well, the, the engineering or the staking done, that kind of gives us an idea of the cost and then we can make an actual page, a webpage that's connected to the town page to be able to whatever you decide donations, whether it is just monetary or it is like, hey, once we get the, you know, the flower beds up, our group or local, you know, local neighborhood community wants to do it in Buffalo Creek, you know, five, six people get together, yeah, that's great because I'm taking care of the, the beds and keeping them look good is a priority, right, we want the, the new project and the memorial plaza to look amazing. So they're all different, there will be all different levels of community involvement and interactions, not just the money, although that does kickstart putting things into the ground, so. We will partner with, you know, the town and partner with Prost to kind of figure out the best way to get that page up and running.
Cool.
So yeah, there, there will be full-on page off the website.
Well, I think we jump into these things because I know we're all excited to get talking about the Fourth of July. Is that okay?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Um. Do, that was it for public? I want to make sure before I cut you off, I'm just excited to get down to the part. Okay, so consideration of minutes, did everybody have a chance to review and is there any edits or anything that was? Okay, so we make a motion to approve minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. I will second the approval of the minutes.
All in favor? Perfect. Um, okay, so going into action items, the Parks and Trails Master Plan.
Okay, gotta jump it back into what we were kind of discussing. How many of you were able to get on Zoom and watch the trustee meeting and the presentation? I just want to say thanks to John, first off, for, for stepping up and it was, it was pretty awesome, you know, I had some notes and everything that we had talked about and I gave it to him, he's like, yeah, this looks great, I think I know what I'm going to talk about and I won't say he winged it because he probably put a lot of effort into it on the backend, which was amazing and he stood up there and basically pushed the ideas of Prost and our Park and Rec Department needing that, the, the master plan to move forward for all the reasons we just discussed. And I think it, it seemed like that if we have a confined effort and put it in the budget in two thousand and twenty-five, the Board of Trustees hopefully will, will listen to us and come with very positive support. There was, there are definitely some questions that we're going to have to answer as a group as well as, as a department and relay those back to the board, but I think the need for it was seen, is seen, and your efforts as a, as an advisory board is absolutely the one that's pushing that forward. So thank you all for that because as the department head and I'll speak on behalf of Eric, it's gets, it gets crazy when we're trying to do multiple different things and having that confined vision, it's so, will be so great for us. So thank you for your efforts and I think we definitely push forward to getting this on the two thousand and twenty-five budget and continue to gain support and answer the questions or bring up things that we're concerned about, need clarifications on, so that when it is presented budget time by myself for as a Board of Trustees, we have, you know, a good movement forward to actually making it an action rather than just a hope.
I did have a few comments about the presentation. I'll start with the easy one, trustee Cheats brought up the fact that we have equipment that can't be, you can't find parts for it anymore, can't be replaced, but we all know the cost of like even the tot lot, that exceeds the amount of money that we saved on the dog. So if the trustees want to throw more money at it and replace something that we can't get parts for, I'm all for that. But the comment also kind of led me to believe that it was more aimed towards like the kids can't play on this anymore, where we, we're thinking about parks as a whole and all the amenities we have. And we do know the disc golf is broken away. I mean, it's not playable, so that is a broken feature that we have, it's an amenity that's not usable. So if we can use that money to do fix stuff that we have, that fits within the budget. And then even if the dog park is part of that, that's something that comes off our list, that's something that has been talked about for years. So I think we are fixing things, it's not just focusing on the playground equipment, it's focusing on parks, period.
Yeah.
And then my other comment about the thing, I think I could have presented better, but honestly, Billy, I was rattled after an hour and a half of sitting and waiting.
Yeah.
And I've, I don't think I've ever been, I don't know, you might be able to speak on this. When I was on the board, we usually let the volunteer boards go first. Main Street, Chamber of Commerce, CAC, everybody, they would always be really early. We had to sit through a very long liquor license and then we were still after another presentation, which was a town board. And it just, it rattled me, so I, I, it was eight o'clock by the time we stood up.
Yeah.
So I just would like to bring that up on account of maybe moving forward.
Yeah.
We could find a way of getting us in a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
Because we talked about maybe switching up who presents.
Yeah.
And you know, I had three kids at home that day and it was nine o'clock before they got fed that night, so it was like.
Making me like strangely uncomfortable. There's so much going on, so.
And the only, the only other bad thing I, I thought about that too is that all the people that were there for the liquor license and the, the different things that happened before us, they had community engagement. There were people that were fighting for them. Those are people who are fighting for their community. We've got two openings on our board. We had at least twenty people get up and walk out. Those could have been passionate people for parks, we don't even know that, because they didn't get a chance to hear us.
Yeah. I mean, it's great feedback and I will, I will run with that for sure.
And I will take that into consideration, when those, when those agendas are made, we we sit down as town leadership and we're able to put things in, there, there are certain reasons why things go the way that they do in line, but.
I understand.
And we'll absolutely take that into consideration.
Yeah, and it holds a lot of weight, so I appreciate you.
Absolutely does.
Thank you.
That's all I really have, other than that, I just really tried to push that master plan because I think once the board sees what the town needs and what the master plan has, it'd be a lot easier for us to fight for things. And for us to prioritize and, and get it pushed through.
Yeah, and to your point, I, I really did, I, I sat back and thought about the, the comments from all of the trustee and one thing that isn't really usually taken into consideration, especially with parks, is depreciation.
Yeah.
Right, you see these big cities and towns go up and it's just like the new development gets new stuff. And as you develop through after seven years, you might have two or three things that you fixed, but that doesn't mean that they're upgraded to the standards that the new thing, so you're kind of leaving certain parts of the community behind. So I really like that focus of bringing in a strong belief that maybe monies shouldn't always go to new things, that's, that's really the way that you keep the community as equitable as possible. So I, I wholeheartedly believe in that, it, it is really just trying to find the, you know, the money to, to actually do that and know, you know, we always want to do, we've always wanted to do viewpoint, right? Redo that and do the port in place there, we, we know that that's on the plan. So if that is something that needs to be redone, that is a total capital idea. And hopefully the Parker Rec Master Plan would show that before it shows, you know, the newest community coming on, getting four baseball fields right next to them and expanding recreation programming so that we're stretching thinner and thinner, so. You noticing that is, is great and I appreciate that and I appreciate the feedback from the trustee members that are thinking about the whole totality of everything and yes, the, the disc golf course is a quite frankly, it's a failed amenity, it's not just the baskets out there, right, it's the, it's the ground, it's how it's laid out, we all know it's not playable for the entirety of the community, so that is something that is some, one of the amenities we can redo that needs to be redone, that is out of date and quite frankly, not accessible.
Great. That's a feedback I've received. Thank you. Yeah, we talked, I think it was at the prep meeting about aligning in the board members to certain parks and I would love to like pursue that and have us aligned so we can support it, we can come to the meetings with, here are the list of things that we're seeing, here's what we're hearing from our community, I think we can engage local community, like neighborhoods to help support that, so I, yeah, I want to, I want to figure out how to do that, we, I think we need a couple more people on the board though, we need to fill those positions.
We do, we do, but I'm happy to discuss that right now, we can do that real quick if you want to. You know, before people discussed, well, I live in this neighborhood, I, I can go kind of check it out, keep an eye. You know, the intent was not to have somebody over there all the time, but it is kind of nice to, to have somebody that's like, oh, hey, you know, I was just over at Community Park and gosh, did you guys know about this or that or you know, whatever. Um, so yeah, absolutely, do you have one that you live by that?
So we're over by, we're in Sage Meadows, so our neighborhood park is not part of this one, but Pirate Park, Winnick Park is one that we go to pretty frequently, also the, the one by Rice, there's, you know, I know that that's part of the disc golf too, so. But wanting that one, you know, we could do that.
The Harvest Village. Or was that a? Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Let's write them both down.
Yeah.
If you're able to do that, that would be awesome.
Sure.
Robert?
Oh, I was doing Harvest Village and Centennial last time.
That's right.
Do those. Aaron's now in that.
Oh, good. John?
I think we're splitting Centennial because I did part of that before. But I, if Robert's got that, I live by Winnick, but if you do that, I can take, is anybody on the east side? No.
I'll just take whatever's left over.
I could do Wellville, Sunset and Park Meadows.
You got to take Wellville.
I do love Wellville, I really do, my, my son's been going fishing, so. I'll take that one. I'll let you know how the fish are biting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can Aaron hear us? Aaron?
Yep, I hear you.
We're just talking about kind of assigning or taking on, you know, parks that we go and we check out. Report back, obviously we can, you know, text Billy and, and get back to everybody right away, but yeah, is there a park that Jesse said she's kind of, she can check on Winnick and Knolls Linear? Robert was talking about Centennial and Harvest Village. John was happy to help out with the east side and so.
WCP and Point?
We have WCP and Viewpoint and I have.
And Harvest Park.
And Harvest.
He's, Robert said Harvest.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. Aaron, do you have a preference of viewpoint or WC?
Yeah, I live really close to viewpoint.
And then I will take WCP.
Good for you.
A lot of amenities, a lot of looking after.
Are you going to come help with this plan?
Yeah. Yeah.
Set her up for what, Saturday mornings?
Um, so I think.
We can readdress that too, once we fill more positions.
Yes, absolutely, we'll spread back out or whatever. I think this department, the Parks Department, does an amazing job of keeping, keeping track of everything going on in all of these parks. And so that being said, you know, this is just kind of like, you know, a way that we feel like we can help and, and participate, also it's a great way for us to reach out and talk to the communities. So when we're in the park, you know, Aaron talking to people at viewpoint, you know, letting them know about the, the post board and coming and talking, the more community involvement we can get at these meetings and then also when we go and present to the town. You know, just increases our chances of getting, getting more of the amenities updated in these parks. So I think it's good for us to, to go out and meet people, so.
It is really good for the future because if, if somebody's really knowledgeable about the park because they've been there quite a bit and then we get the master plan and it says somewhere down south, we need a tennis ball court. And it's like, okay, well, I know Winnick's got this really spot, good spot where nothing's used and we've got the money to put up a tennis ball. Like that's really important for getting out there and, and knowing the area, so.
Yeah. Um, also, I did a great job, thank you to you and your department for putting together the presentation for trustees. Thank you.
I appreciate it. It's combined effort.
I, yeah, I wasn't sure who all to thank, but I know you, I know you had several people working out.
Multiple different hands needed to get it done.
Yeah, that turned out really good, so thank you. Um, okay, moving on to WCP Memorial Plaza update.
Yep. It it would have been in the packet had I had the information two days ago, but continuing the work with town engineering staff, we did get some preliminary costs of doing the grading, staking and survey. Am I allowed to share if it's not in the packet? Because I do have like an actual quote. But I can, I can give you general numbers, it's kind of like a, an à la carte. And they can go anywhere from, you know, the totality of staking and creating the whole area and putting in stuff for if we did a wall and all the memorials, like everything that we would want in the future to just getting it kind of in the space that we needed to make sure it's off the floodplain and get the height right for if we do public works to come in and do the earthwork so that the crew knows where to go and the slope so that we don't have to do a wall, that's what we decide. And the, the price range was more than first expected, it goes anywhere from like thirty-five hundred, four thousand up to like seven grand, but working and talking with the engineering staff, they, they make great recommendations. And there's like three or four things on the quote-unquote à la carte that we definitely need. So I, I think we're probably looking just to say like about forty-five hundred dollars and that will actually get us a better idea of the walk coming up from the dog park to make sure that the heaving hasn't changed the ADA, if we need to change all that. Giving us specs for where electrical should be going all the way through the project, everything that we probably would want in the long term rather than just making sure it's out of the floodplain and the height is good. So that's kind of where we're, we're sitting, I think we all know that that's the next step. So just kind of wanted to present that as far as what we do is, or what we have as far as the money hurdle taking the next step in the project. We we do have what the, the board approved last year is that, that money for minor park improvements that was much larger than it had been in the past. This is a major park improvement, I think the first part of it could potentially fall in that minor park improvement budget, we haven't really used much of that as Prost yet and, or recommendation from Prost to use that to upgrade our park amenities. So I think I have to get approval for that, but I think that probably would be a good first step. Especially being presented today with, you know, the first donation that we have for it, having stakes out there, having the plaque out there for, the, the stand and the promotional stuff for the Fourth of July. If we actually have all that out there, it is the first step, so I'm just kind of want thoughts on that to see where I can then maybe make a recommendation or get a recommendation, I mean, and maybe move forward with doing it.
Well, I'm super excited about it, so I, I feel really positively how you're doing.
Yeah, we got to get some stuff from the works, we got to start showing progress. Got a lot of talk.
That's exciting.
Yay, so I mean, I think everybody's excited, right, and ready to move, so what, what do, how can we help, I mean, I think we're all good with you charging ahead.
Yep, and I'll charge ahead in any way that I can, if you guys are okay, I mean, sure you're okay with it, right? I think we're all excited about it, but I just wanted to, to let you know that that's where it's at and like actually we have a company that can come in and do it, they're also working with Public Works potentially on some other projects, so there's, there might be larger scale, but ours is small enough where it falls within the purchasing policy where we wouldn't necessarily have to get multiple bids because it is a contractor, a local that is vetted that we could just use. And that's where it's good to be able to have that à la carte because the total package we might have to go out, but what we really need is within that, so we should be able to just go ahead and move forward.
Do you have to get any other approvals from the board or are you able to?
Um, at, at that purchasing press, I don't believe so, I will run it through and make sure that falls within the category of minor park improvements, but really when this was presented to the board last year is the Prost presented it and to ask for more minor park improvements, I mean, this is kind of what that's for, right?
And it is a park improvement, that face will be improved.
We also, we also have a donation coming from someone else from our VSW meeting, right, that we can reach out to? And I think that was part of the kickoff donation, do you guys recall that? Search my brain.
Brian Mason, Brian Mason said, he's been begging to give you money.
Yes, okay, thank you.
He is the one who mentioned it. I don't feel, I feel like I'm volunteering for it, but he said it so many times, I feel pretty confident.
So someone says charge ahead.
Yes.
On that and, and move forward and actually kind of make the first step to the actual project getting on the ground. And then there's a bunch of extra dirt that's coming from the water reclamation project, so you know, Public Works has to have enough dirt on hand with all of their projects, but there's extra dirt, so we, from what I'm getting right now, we shouldn't have any problem doing that quote-unquote in-house within the town. Quote-unquote in-house uh within the town, so obviously have to set all of it up after this taking gets done with. Public Works to make sure that they can still do the work, you know, they have a heavy workload, but um scheduling that, we'll just, that'll be the next step.
Progress, progress, progress is progress, moving dirt is fun, yes, they like moving dirt, so they're happy.
You have one here Fourth of July marketing, are we, are you, you're able to just push forward and?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we are gonna be able to put some, we will put something out there, I hope stakes will be out there then. I, you know, obviously turning around tonight's conversation to an actual contract with. Um, the engineer firm, we have to go back and forth on the à la carte stuff, but um.
Just have to put some stakes out there.
Slipping straight into the box.
Probably not.
Even a sandwich board of.
Yeah, go see the beer garden if we get that, so. Well, even with the amount of people that walk down that trail, having something out would get the word out a little bit better. Because that trail is heavily walked, so. If if we get to the marketing piece of the sandwich boards, definitely by the Fourth of July, I think that will be a a problem. What I would like, though, is after, to have something a little more stationary, so we can leave it out there, you know, sandwich boards, they not just walk away, but they definitely blow. Very quickly out on the the race trail, so I'd like to get something a little more. Temporary, permanent, you know, so that it's there for people walking in the morning, or if anybody have questions, like, why don't you go visit the site, you know, now that. You have the ability to get out there and see where it's at, so.
Is it too early to create like a QR code with a Venmo for donation, are we there yet?
I, before the Fourth of July, I don't know if we'll be able to get there. Um, because it'll probably just say, you know, coming soon, like what we did with the fishing derby and the dock. Something similar to that, if we had a QR code, we would need to set up the backend for taking donations, and also have the website set up, so like it would. Take you to the website, so you can see all the different layers, like we just discussed, um.
We could do it on Smaric, but they'd have to create an account, which would just. Get it put in your address and all that, it would cause a really big barrier to entry.
Yeah. And and with this type of donation, with these types of donations, and with the the Fourth of July, um. Potential Beer Garden. Raffle or whatever, we're gonna be able to throw it out, I did reach out to. Um, the finance director and our um town attorney to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. You know, I think there's some things coming that. Or or things that would potentially come that we might have that town staff there, because as a volunteer board, I don't think that you guys can actually handle money. But if we only do. Track cards, like, how does that work, so there's some stuff to work out for the full process, but um. We're in discussion about that, to make sure that we can start to, so.
Great, were we able to get any posters up around town about it yet?
We can, I think the same marketing material that we put out on the sandwich board could easily go and become. You know, we'll post it on all of our social media, and then we'll do what we do when we take it to all the businesses. Um, talk to the chamber if they want to put something up as well, obviously, if we can. Well, however you feel we can push stuff out, um, we'll we'll get it out that way, and everybody's just start hitting the like button on the the social media posts. And sharing it, stuff. Or early next week, we'll get that out.
Cool, okay, yeah, that's awesome.
It, not too hard, I mean, it's, we have the renderings, we have the the cat drawing, you know, we just have to figure out how to make it look good and. Put it out there so that. We'll know more about it, right?
Yeah.
I will be on the lookout for more donations for the Fourth of July raffle.
Yeah.
I still have a few people to talk to about that.
Okay.
I think, you know, if we're gonna do it, we need to make sure that we have a decent amount to make it worth it, but. Yep, so what do, what do we have overall for that? You, you had a couple donations?
Yeah, I just got the two that I had originally, I kind of fizzled out, and I'm going with that. I don't, I I still don't think we're ready for it, so many questions that need to be done too.
Yeah.
Then I brought the a T-bar um gift card.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, I think what we have is good for raffles, I'm not really saying I'm auctioning, because. I mean, that's kind of the thing, is like, yeah, who's gonna sign an auction for a twenty-five dollar, fifty dollar gift card?
Right, right.
But I'll put a dollar in here to try to win fifty bucks.
Right. Every chunk of American Greens.
And I will, I mean, I, I mean, I. What's that?
He makes these, the wooden flags.
I have.
Those are awesome. Really good about that, so. Do you know who does the uh metal flag cutouts? Because they had stuff at one of your auctions before.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
I wish I could remember that one, because those were really neat.
So, I mean, I can, I can buy, I can. It wasn't, it wasn't hard, I mean, I was cranking on them, they were just. Being really nice, but it just.
At least you have a poster or something, though, that that's when they comment.
Yeah.
And then you can say, build a gift basket, not just a card, like, you know, those kind of things, so I think, I think we're almost there. That's exciting. American Greens, I have one there, it's nothing before, they're.
So if we get something, it it will be sooner or later, but if it's, you know. For the weekend or first part of next week, uh, we hit the ground with trying to get a few more donations in the next few weeks to get enough for. Fourth of July?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And just take it out and knock on doors. Yeah, could you get something by Saturday?
I just wanna throw it out there, though, if you guys have a float for the parade, and it has the same kind of coming soon kind of thing, that would be. You would have so many eyes on that.
Yeah.
That would be pretty.
That's a really great idea.
Yeah.
Well, Fourth, yeah, and Fourth of July is the biggest day for us at the classy shop, so I want to get a big poster.
Yeah.
Everybody can see it, that's coming in.
And even if you're not accepting any kind of money or anything, just to get it in people's minds, the same coming soon, people get excited and they'll ask you.
Yeah.
Yeah. That might be a good thing for the.
That's a great thing, we should really have the s- some kind of donation thing set up for that. Yeah, you don't want to learn in the mood. That is true, we we do take donations for uh every time someone signs up for recreation, there's a, there's a pay, or a little box that says, do you want to donate towards?
Right now, it's safety.
Safety gear, right? Um. Possibly, we can just do it through our recreation center program and have. Maybe a QR code, take them to the website, if we can build a backend, um, be okay to try to work on that, and I'll see what I can do as far as the.
Yeah.
The marketing stuff.
I think, as I thought about it, I think I have a workaround, where people like signing all the way up, so, let's see.
Yeah, the, you're, side note, the recreation, this uh program that we use. They have pretty decent facilitators, so it might be. Good contacting them, Eric's got good contacts there, so.
That'd be great, let me just, yeah, whatever, you know, anything would be great. You know, if it's more complicated than you would like, at least it's something, something.
Exactly. Sweet.
It's it, man, I know, that's how I feel every day of my life.
It's all right, it's all for due causes, right?
Yes.
I mean, if you think about the workload, and then you see that vision of like what it would look like walking into the place, it's like, it's all. For sure, you know. Excellent.
Okay, are we ready to move on to Tree City? Oh, ki- sorry, can we have to talk about the Fourth of July slint, or we? What are we doing with that?
Did you get the link for all the stuff? Amazon link I sent you, did you order this stuff? All right. I did fill out the form and gave him a ten dollar check, so we are registered.
Oh, okay, good.
So we're there.
Truck.
Uh, truck is Aaron.
Hey.
Should be good, and Chrome Dome's letting us borrow his trailer, I'll double check with him, I haven't talked to him in a.
Okay.
A couple weeks, but yeah.
July's on his hair.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the decorations.
Yeah, panic mode.
But it, it is on the. Future meeting calendar, we talked about it last meeting, put something up there, to be actually scheduled, specific date.
I mean, that's the weekend work, weekend work probably does for everybody, but do evenings work for peoples? Monday, Tuesday.
To prep it?
Yeah.
Says, yeah, make. Uh, there it is, create prost flow, late June is always said.
I'll ask Jim if we could borrow, if we could have the trailer that we can decorate. Nothing to tear it all off, just. See if we can get it, and then um. Yeah, we can park it at, maybe Aaron's house, I guess, probably be the easiest, if he's got space out there, or. My place, I have a big driveway, you can sit on there too.
Yeah.
I just do it right now, this is, this was my lunch today with. So, you're just gonna do it now, yes, right?
If you want a Saturday.
I'm gonna ask Jim if we can borrow it for the Saturday before Fourth of July, and then just have it for that week. But if he needs it for his work, then we'll have to push it to.
You know, Monday, Tuesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, evening, something like that.
That they're all excited, but I will be out of the country until the second, so, unless it happens the night before, I won't give them. I was really excited too.
Um, I'll be available. All week, for sure. I can do evenings, I can do the weekend.
Yeah.
So. Preferably not like the third.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I gotta take that back, we we definitely won't be. Potentially not the second, unless you do it like. Yeah, just throw it, you, whatever we want, just throw that in that group. Yeah.
Anything else on this subject?
Um, we had spoken about Tree City, becoming a Tree City USA, I threw in the packet the four standards. That are necessary to apply for Tree City, um. We'll just talk about it, I'll just go through it real quick, but standard one, uh, tree board or department. We have a Parks Department that does all of our tree work, and the certified arborist multiple that uh are contracted through the town. Plus a parking rec advisory board that advises in the direction, especially big. So that one, I think we're, we're very well um in alignment with. Standard two is a public tree care ordinance, so that's the one that we definitely would need to develop. Um, they have uh template ordinances that we could use, we could use a different towns ordinance, but it's something that we would have to. Uh, put an ordinance in and get it approved, um. So that's, that's all we'd have to work on. And the, what was three is community forestry program with an annual budget of at least two dollar per capita. That's already in the budget, um, well, well within the budget, because we have the two line items, we have tree. Care, which is um spraying or mitigating tree uh, of the trees that are already planted, the the desiccation and improving the health. So we have that budget line, and then we also have um tree trimming and new tree planting, and both of those uh combined. Get to over the. Let's say we have twelve thousand people in town, we're paying. The people, might get over the twenty-four thousand that we would need. So that one, easily checked, because it's straight map. And then the last one is an Arbor Day observance or proclamation, easily checked. Um, so we, we need an ordinance, right, that's kind of the next step in applying for a Tree City. USA um certification or designation, I should say, um. I also wanted to put this on here, because yesterday I was in a uh, a Parks and Rec GIS mapping. Um. Webinar, and it wa- it was good, aligned with the other things that we're trying to do with documenting everything and getting the trees GIS, which is done. Building the program, so we can eventually capture all of our amenities and do cost replacement, all the fun things that we've spoken on. But this one gentleman talked a lot about just specifically trees, and um. Both state and federal forest service. Um, departments or organizations actually have a lot of grant money that does not go used. And I looked up the Colorado Forest Services, and um they have some pretty good grants for urban forest. Urban forestation that we can absolutely use to not just, you know, supplement our budget, but actually make. Wholesale improvements to areas that we would want trees to go into, or if we're developing new parks, be able to use a grant to put more trees that are. Natural trees that are in there to reduce the cost of a new park, all sorts of cool things. And they had uh an acronym, it was uh basically. A lot of it aligned with what becoming a Tree City is, and it was like staff, having an ordinance. Having the public backing, having the board backing, so like all these things, and like. The one thing on both of those, to get grants and to also become a Tree City, was just an ordinance, so it's like, if we do this one piece and move forward with that. It opens up multiple doors to become a designated Tree City, and also be better as an applicant for grants. So I was just like, wanted to let you guys know that, like, something definitely to push for. Um, because I think personally, our our tree canopy is tough to grow trees here.
Yeah.
Um, but the uh. CSU extensions, as well as uh. A bunch of different uh forestry companies, and uh, I don't know who all put it together, to be honest, but uh, one of the companies that we work with, Bartlett, just. They finally got the. New uh and approved list of trees that up and down the front range, and in Colorado actually have been shown over the last few years that make it in certain areas. So, you know, taking all of the information and all of the research that Colorado florists do. Being able to get grants, being able to be a Tree City, it's like, you know, cool to be a culmination of the next few years. And I think sometimes we we wait a little while, and then it's like, go, 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 but it's like, if we start this idea now. Maybe we don't get a grant the first year, but we set ourselves up for like being in a really strong position to do it.
Once we turn in the application for Tree City, because we have, all the things are done, how long does that take?
I, to be honest, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I don't know if it's um. You know, a vetting process where they they have a board that looks through it, or if, you know, you just put your application in, and they check off some boxes on a board, or if you have to do. You know, sit down and have a process with a board and talk to them about your town and what you're trying to do again. Anytime you have a parking rec master plan and show them that, you know, we're trying to improve the whole town, that always helps, so, that's another thing. I'll be honest, I do not know.
A- and then the ordinance are um. Did you say you're able to work on that, or?
Yeah, I can work on that with town staff.
Okay, town staff can.
And then there are templates that um. Uh, I think the the uh Arbor Day Foundation has one. Because they recommend when you go to to do a proclamation, you do an ordinance as well.
Okay.
If you can model other towns local to us that have done ordinances.
Okay. That's great. Yeah, we've talked about this for a long time, so it's kind of cool to see it come, that's pretty. Yeah.
If you need me to find someone to add it as a a priority agenda item, let me know, I'm sure, except for Sack, if you can do it, but if you want.
Yeah. Yep, and I've, I've spoken with other town staff about this specifically and other. Things that we're working on, that's definitely something that they want to do, I'm. Think it should be too difficult, it's just getting the time to do it and then having it approved, but.
And if we need the the letters of recommendation too, I know other, um, like when we did, you know, Playful City, we needed a bunch of letters rec, so. Whatever, whatever you need.
Yep.
We will, you want to just make it pro octave and have pros draft a a letter, recommending that?
Yeah.
Go for it, I mean, that couldn't hurt, that's. That's very exciting.
Anybody else on this one?
Oh, man, dude.
Fishing is fun.
I got the most recent update from Travis Longley Grant um, manager and. The, everything is ready, the PO is sitting on the, the desk um, waiting to be cut, so. We'll hopefully get that soon. The holdup with the whole process is that it's a, a state entity, so their fiscal year ends. You know, it's on June thirty-first, so the department cutting the checks is also going through their. Auditing process and all that stuff, but. As recent as last week, it's like, it's, it's there, it's just waiting to get to you, so. As an update, I still don't know exactly when, but as I've said, we probably, we, we won't purchase the doc until we get that, but. On Thursday, I'm meeting the gentleman from EZ Doc who has it all um. It's all on his desk too, so once, it'll be an easy turnaround to get that start going, the, to get the purchase going and shipped. Uh, but I'm meeting him out there to go over everything one time again, so that when we get the doc or when we know it's coming, we're ready, ready, ready to go. We're all good with the doc in the floodway. Uh, because it is in the floodway, but a floating entity does not impact the floodway. The biggest thing is just the concrete and you can't disturb a floodway. Um, did I, did I put the map up there? Do you wanna go to the dog park map? I know this is kind of jumping ahead, but it, it's kind of both projects in one, um, so the, the cyan. Coloring outlines the actual flood. Way and um, the darker blue, which is a little harder to see, is the flood plain. So you can do some impact in the flood plain, which is where the dog park is gonna be, so that's not gonna be a problem. But we won't put the dog park into the cyan, we will have to get um. A form and I, I mentioned this last time, so in the town engineers, they have basically um. A form that they have to fill out and inspect the area, and then I have to go and sign off on it that this is the intended use of disturbing in the floodway. Um, but it's something that they've done in the past and isn't too much of an issue from what I've got, so it's just for the concrete, the dock is floating, so it. Won't be um, disturbing what they consider. Changing what they consider disturbing the, the flood way.
Okay.
So. Six, six to eight weeks, but if I hopefully rub some elbows when he comes out on Thursday, you know, maybe he said it was in a month or two because it is. You know, kind of a common one that they use for these type of situations, so. Just wanted to update that it's, it's a little out of the hands now, but the PO should be coming.
So cool, okay, cool. They have anything on that one? Okay, we're excited. Okay, CIP funding.
So, John, good job, presentation, I think uh. We've kind of discussed it a little bit, I just wanted to um, you know, put it all. In this packet, have you guys discuss and give me, you know, a yea or a nay on moving forward. Vote on moving forward for me presenting for the reappropriation of funding from um, a CIP project. That was um, partially funded by a grant. As we discussed originally, uh, to, the two projects that we'd be asking money for would be the re-alignment. And movement of the disc golf course from the east and west side to just the west side. And changing the course so that it's more accessible, as well as all updated signage, new baskets, all the things that are. Failing right now and um. Increasing the amenity from a single use disc golf course to a multi-use disc golf, foot golf and. I think it's called park golf, uh, I've heard it called snag golf before, but it's basically just uh. Mini tennis balls and big plastic clubs, so you can actually play golf golf there if you want, cause it's got a hole in the ground, so. Uh, multiple different uses. I talked to, or I emailed with um, Amy Jenkins, who is the one that would be doing the installation. Um, as recently as today, and he has ensured me that the price is still good on this as well as um. You know, where we're getting it, what we would be getting it for about, I think it's twenty-four thousand eight hundred and three dollars or something, it's, the cost is in there. Um, but typically a course like this for nine holes and all of the signage, all the baskets. All the building and grading of everything would be somewhere in the range of forty to fifty thousand dollars, as discussed, it's almost fifty percent discount because we're a local partner. So all of those things um, are combining for the ask for the CIP reappropriation. And then um, the, the dog park, I, I did kind of a. You know, scroll down there to the dog park portion of it, it's gonna be past all that. Just that, just a little monetary breakdown, this doesn't cover any cost of labor. Because we would potentially be doing it ourselves, or probably gonna do it ourselves, the idea with the, the dog park is to do um. Four by fours in concrete that are six foot high with a, well, they're eight foot, but we put them down two feet, so in a five foot mesh fence around. Understanding that this is probably kind of like a pilot dog park and we would be asking the community for input on what amenities they would wanna see moving forward. You have a, the large open area that stays outside of the floodway, but is in the floodplain, but we've got to go ahead to do that, including. Auger drilling and pouring concrete, um, which was recommended, I spoke with the town engineer and he said, no, do that, you don't want, you don't want it to go in there, right? So uh. Preliminary pricing, but I would say, you know, just to be safe, we're looking at about seven thousand dollars to put the fence up in raw material costs and then. Labor with the house.
We're not trying to put anything on the ground, right? Like at the other dog park, we had some of the, the crusher finds. We're not cleaning that, right?
Yeah.
This would just be a natural, native thing.
Yep. And. One thing that was pretty interesting that came up too in conversation with the, with the town engineer when we were on site is uh. That, there's the spillway that comes from the northeast or the northwest corner. And that's kind of getting cut away over the years, um. So he was, he was interested to see that and uh, that would be in the dog park perfectly fine. You know, if it's boiling water, dogs have something to do, if not, something to jump over, whatever, but he's like, oh, I think we need to reconstruct this. Which is really cool, you know, it's an engineering project that he kind of had in his mind moving forward. Um, but I guess what came of it is that the farmer on the frontage road and that they're in the process of trying to sell that farm, so a lot of that runoff is coming from farming. So if they, they reengineer it, it should stay good for a lot longer unless it's reappro- or reused as farmland, it's not being sold like that. So it's just kind of an interesting little backstory to the, the land and how it was.
Yeah.
Kind of cut away in, in a way that they, you wouldn't necessarily think from how much water's going through there. Um, and then being there with an engineer like, this isn't supposed to be like, I'm like, why, you know, like, okay, great. And then, you know, that collaboration, like, yeah, do the dog park, but then, you know, eventually we're gonna have to regrade this and it might actually smooth it out and make it a more usable area, so. But back to the dog park, this is kind of what I came up with as far as, as cost for putting that out there, um, it does incorporate a little. Dog park is, or a shy dog area.
That's my next question.
As well.
Okay.
And that would, that would be, so it'd be a fence, and a fence into the shy dog area. Or a fence from the outside of the shy dog into the open area as well as a fence coming in and then a nice survey to see what people would like.
So what's the um, amenities that go into a dog park?
Well, it depends on what people want, you know, you see some dark parks that are, that have water, like a WCP, you know. Over time, we've allowed them to use the irrigation pump, we don't have that option there, um, but we do have the option to put a tap in for like a, a water fountain. And a place they can fill dog bowls with, you can do like uh, um, an agility area, you know, you see. Um, some places that have the ramps, they can go up and down and the things that they can jump on, you know, just. Turn it into a playground, or maybe people just want more like a fetch park, which is what Trusty Daly had um, seen in a presentation. Um, a while back and thought it's a cool idea, this would probably be big enough for kind of the fetch park idea. Um, but it would still be fenced so that we wouldn't have to necessarily change any public ordinances there, so. All, all, all sorts of different things.
So, so setting this up into the dog park, could we get ahead of the game on if someone wanted to. Bring a agility course to it or wanted to donate agility course to it, you could have birdage or signage ready to go like. Come to our meeting at post, if you want to bring amenities outside of this to your, to the dog park.
Right.
There, because. You know, it, it's just gonna, I, you know, my thing is this is gonna become a laundry list of, we want this, we want this, we want this, and then we're gonna be saying. No, 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 because we don't have any money, blah, 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 blah. So how do we get this going to be, to open it up for people that do stuff?
I would, I would say um, from my standpoint, I, I don't, I wouldn't feel as comfortable with people just being allowed to bring whatever they.
No, you'd have, you'd have to get approval as you want, you know, that kind of.
I also don't necessarily have full approval to put anything else down there, because it is in the floodplain, so I still have to, to go along. And we can't disturb it too much, you know, we couldn't put any, for now.
Not say what amenities you want and just let that go as a thing, cause as soon as you start asking questions, people are gonna want answers to their questions.
Shade and benches and, and a water fountain, you know, all that stuff. I think that leads us to getting the funding for it. And my thing also is, I would assume it's not gonna go this way, but what if it isn't used as much as we think and you know, we've. We put money just into the fencing of it, but if it isn't used that much, then we just leave the fence and. Haven't had people bring stuff for, you know, two or three people, I, I don't know, open to discussion. Um, the idea was just maybe to give, get, get a little public feedback before we did amenitize it, but.
I know, we've heard people for years talking about having a dog.
Yeah, it's gonna be used.
Yes, it would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just get caught in the, you know, we offer. Yeah, we threw you a bone, but you can't even chew on it yet because, you know, we're still waiting to add some seasoning and stuff, you know, but.
That's, that's something discussed.
I think the benches is gonna come up.
Yeah.
How can people start, how can people help get benches here sooner than waiting for the town?
Well, I think that a, a bench is something that we could. Oh, we have an extra bench or two. The C Doc shop, so that's something that we could just, you know, we could put in there. You know, like, do we want, do we want to, I guess it's more for us, do we wanna just put benches over there or say, what kind of benches do you wanna see, like? There, look at a dog park magazine, like, there's a million different things you can put in a dog park, right? So, like, where, where do we wanna go with this?
Stay with our standard, right?
Yeah. Uh, it would probably be kind of like the other dog park, more, more of like an aluminum style to start with, like the, like a uh, thickly table bench, but like. Then within the standards, black, usable, how do we go, what kind of canopy, you know, all the fun things.
Those are also things you could turn into like dog amenities, like. If we use one with holes in it, dogs aren't gonna jump on it, but like, my dog loves to hop up on a bench. Like if the ability is there and that allows them the like agility option, if you make it usable.
Okay, there is already a memorial bench program, right? And there's also dedicate trees program. So maybe part of that is if you wanna contribute, here's the programs in which you can do that. I mean, if those are existing programs, you don't really.
Get a bench out here, we have this program.
Yeah.
Want some tree shade, here's this program you can do, we can put it out.
Yeah, I don't know about trees, alright, well.
Yeah, but, but if there's already existing programs, you might as well just push those.
Yeah.
No reinventing the wheel necessary.
No, I don't think so.
I think that would be a good start, at least.
Does the design allow for the double gate entry? You know how a lot of the dog parks have.
Oh, yeah.
Gates, so you can close one and the dogs, how does that help something?
I conserve, well, very preliminarily, I added a little extra of that, that's why I say, you know, I, I just came up with that cost, but if we say seven thousand dollars and easily get. You know, multiple gates for the, for the double entry yet.
That's really helpful.
Yeah, and that's why I was thinking the shy dog, shy dogs, from the outside and from the inside, so if you, you know, you have a shy dog, but you do wanna enter the regular park. We'll go from the shy dog to that, but also the double entry, like the H W C P.
I think we're all excited, what do you need from us for the, the reappropriation of the CIP funding? Do you need a formal vote or do you just need us to say?
A formal vote would be good.
Okay. Do we have any more conversation that you guys wanna have before we make a formal vote? I don't feel like we're leaving anything else that we wanna talk about. I think we wanna word that motion, can you help with that?
Is that, I was just thinking, um. I make a motion. Uh, that we approve staff moving forward with the reappropriation of the fund saved in the dock project to be allocated towards the dog park. And the multi-use golf park.
Second that motion, all in favor? Aaron?
I, I.
Alright, all in favor, so this is great, yeah.
And um. I'll say, now that I have that approval, uh, I already put it on the. Board meeting for. Let me get the exact date, it's the, I think, first board meeting after the fourth of July, so.
Hey, hey, everybody, I've gotta check out here.
Thanks, Aaron.
Alright, thank you.
Each calendar, um, we'll figure out the date for um, float party. And then uh, we, you know, we talked about bringing Cody in at that first meeting. In July. At that point, I think this would be a, this will be a really, hopefully a really pertinent one to talk about, uh, we should hopefully have a much. For firm date on when the dock is gonna be delivered and I can get with public works to make that sure that we're. Good to go with the concrete and then we'll get it installed, so we can start talking about um. Dock ribbon cutting and what that will, you know, what we want that to look like. Maybe involvement, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and say if, if anything kind of continues to delay, maybe I'll, you know, unfortunately, we'd have to push. To talk about that. There could be a, a period where, you know, we wanna do it. Right after the August meeting, so getting it together, so maybe we'd make a special meeting just to talk about that in between the July meeting, cause if the doc is coming. You know, if it gets moved forward faster, but we don't quite know in July, and we can get it up. And, you know, we wanna do it, you know, the third week in August, August fourteenth doesn't give us enough time to promote that. So I'm just wanna throw that out there, that I'll, I'll keep you in the loop about what I know on the project. So if the time is kind of funky, we might come back and just talk about that specifically, cause we do wanna promote that, but we also wanna do it. As soon as we can after that drops in, because we still want it to be in fishing season, we still want the water to be as high as possible, we want the grass to look good, so. You know, that could just be an interesting time if it kind of falls in between. So, just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, we can start throwing around ideas now and, yeah.
Um, yeah, we'll keep it looking good. I don't even have a, a ton put on for that one, but then that next meeting, um, you know, Cody comes in, I think that would be a pretty decent amount of time.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Since he's coming, I would urge everybody to continue their thoughts about. Um, you know. The comprehensive plan, um, at that point, there's a chance that we'll have uh. That is depend, some strategic plan stuff, maybe, I don't think anything will be set by then. I think that with Cody coming, we're already gonna have a wide list of things to talk about, so we just don't need to pad that agenda very much at all. I think we'll have him. Questions for him for a little bit. Okay.
The dock ribbon cutting, I know sometimes the. The dock ribbon cutting, I know sometimes the. Help me, the, the, the fishing derby we've done in. With the Florida parks, right? Would we wanna in- involve them?
In the fish, yeah, because we can get our local representative, like I talked to Travis, um, the grammar, because they're the ones that are. Doing the grant. Yeah, absolutely.
So we can get, get them somehow.
Yeah, cause they donated the fish to Kuanis who puts it in. Kuanis, obviously, they wrote a letter of support for the grant, um, definitely.
Okay, sorry, I was thinking of ways we can incorporate.
We have a fishing cookout?
That would be awesome.
Just to feel like it, and then.
Just keep in mind too, we're one of the top sponsors for the chamber and they love to do red, they love to do ribbon cutting.
Just thinking, automatic, like, yeah, no question, yeah, 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 but like, you know, we can get the fish truck there.
Make it out, walk it out. Please, yeah, we need to get a whole, they're, they're touching the hole.
Yeah, it'd be perfect.
That would be so awesome, yeah.
Call the fish, you call the fishing truck?
Yeah, as soon as we can get. We can just see how booked they are in August though, right? Like, and start kinda putting a bug in their hair.
Yeah.
Hilarious. Okay, what else do we got?
We'll just do it on their schedule. Promote it seven A M. The first bite, right? Yeah, I think, um. You know, what? Come the August and September meeting that pushes a lot of what we focus on was that. My budgeting portion of getting forward with the park and wreck master plans, that will be a huge portion of what we discuss as far as, um. Large things and it's just wrapping up maybe some of the little projects, having updates with that, because. My fix stations will go at the same time as the concrete for the fishing docks, so those will kinda wrap up at the same time and then.
Can we revisit, can we have Bob come and kinda just re, like, download the trail stuff?
Yeah, I think.
Is that okay?
Yeah, if we wanna do it, I can ask him, um, you know, skip August, maybe September.
September, yeah.
Just put a temporary in there, like, yo, it's up now, yeah.
Yeah, just to make sure you're still good with that.
Yeah.
We have announcements, uh. We got over a lot.
Yeah, we did go over a lot, um, just real quick, we've been running the splash pad with all of the upgrades. I would love people to come see it, cause it's really, uh. You ever seen another type of splash pad, it's very different, um, as far as how it works, but it's been. For the most part, other than, you know, working with a new system. Pretty seamless, right? I mean, we've had a little hiccups here and there, but, um, there's a few pieces that were waiting to get in. One of the last major pieces is coming on the twenty eighth, and that really should finalize putting it all together. Um, last I looked, we're like. Twenty eight thousand dollars of the hundred and twenty five that we had, so that's another project that's. Very cost effective, um, but it would be fun to have you guys go see Laurelland's Park W C P. Park that Laurelland built, kind of, you know?
I'm so excited about it.
Um, it'd be fun to take a trip, like, we, we've been doing, like, to take you and show you all the upgrades and why we did them and how they work. Um, so that's, that's a huge one, you know, getting the splash pad going with all the new stuff, um.
Uh, you guys handled that really well, I, I know, but there was a lot of, um. Feedback and, um, and, and people were really excited and, um, you know, sometimes. Turning it, the system on and getting going, and I know it can be tough, and, um, I think you guys handled it so amazingly well with grace, so. We're trying, this is our goal, and this is what we're trying to do, and we're, give us patience as we get through it, so thank you.
Yeah. Um, uh, the biggest thing is just the public safety, so when you put a new system in that's putting chemicals out and you've never dealt with it before. Uh, you wanna just make sure you're, you're within your parameters and running it too long and making sure staff is trained, all that is encapsulated, because. Uh, you know, Eric and I both got our aquatic facility operator's license to stay compliant, so that we literally can run pools now, but this is like a mini pool. Um, sometimes more difficult in certain aspects, but like, you know, we're doing the right things to make sure that we're being safe for the public and. Just going and jumping in and saying, it's open for twelve hours a day, good luck, you know, it's like, oh, it's a little scary, so. Just making sure we're doing it the right way and once we felt comfortable, it's like, okay, expand the hours and increase the testing and. Um, decrease the overall chemicals, which is fantastic, which we'll show you guys, so. Um, splash pads, one thing, obviously, working on those multiple different projects we've discussed earlier today, um. I don't even know how we kept up with it, but the amount of baseball, softball, adult softball, youth softball. It's going, um, this Friday, we've got a, uh. What is the, yeah, exact verbiage, come, come try. Um, to keep promoting, we've got the one team for, um, fast pitch softball now, which we hadn't had in four years.
Four years since twenty twenty one.
Yep, so since COVID, um, but we're, we're just trying to bring people that wanna do soft. Fast pitch softball out, so we've got a free trial event this Friday at W C P. Which is pretty cool, oh, excuse me, sorry, library, you're right, at, here at library. Um, to try to garner more interest and get some more age ranges in there to get multiple teams, so that'll be fun. We just had the, um, tenth year anniversary of Main Streets. This last weekend, and that was really fun, we did a park and play, Main Street had, um, six, six or seven different vendors out there, uh, few truck vendors out there, a bunch of. Pants for vendors, it was a good collaborative effort with some live music, so, um, still trying to move forward, we've got a bunch of events still on the docket. And, uh. Yeah, well, that's a thing, fourth of July is coming up, I'll give you updates on what I can find immediately with both the marketing and the donation, so.
Oh, batting cages finally got opened, they were up. All the testing happened, and then the moment we like tried to publicly open them, they had a giant failure. Yeah, two motherboards broke, so, yeah, our repair person thankfully like express shipped them out. Um, obviously not a cheap fix, but it's up and going, so. Um, but that's something to like keep this group thinking about too, because. The older those things get, the more expensive they get, that part, like, e- every part is just harder and harder to come by. As they age, so. Um, other than that, on the bright side, things are rolling.
Yeah. Has anybody seen Wellville lately? We put the new aerators in. So instead of the above or at surface level, um, we have aquatics associates come in and put the, the two ones like we have at. W C P, they've got little aerator boxes out there, so they're much more sustainable over the long run, as well as there's multiple points. At each pond that they found that the deepest parts at, so machine air with, um. We'll call it a diffusator, that's not the right word. Distributors, but they're percolators, thank yous for. Which is, it pushes air for like three different. Areas, they're, they're really small, they're like this big, but it goes like wide, middle and straight up, so it actually is pushing. Oxygen through more of the, um, actual depth in the layers, rather than just the surface and churning it, so. It'll be much better for the long-term ecology. No idea. Pretty cool. It's a little, a little box like this big right next to the pedestal of one of these logs, so.
Um, one thing I did wanna ask too, is there, do we wanna do anything for Parks and Recreation? In July, it's like some sort of proclamation or? Anything? I'm hoping to do some like staff recognition too, but like other stuff that everyone wants to think about would be.
Is there a?
There's a whole template that we got sent from N R P A, I mean, all of that, and so there's like a pre-written. Declaration ready to go, that we should be able to just like, do some quick changing on and. And get it all in, but just thinking about that.
Yeah.
And also just, you know, thanks staff if you ever. Walking by them for all of your work, cause I'm doing a lot, so.
When do you, are you gonna, when do you think you can get the proclamation in part of that, that first July meeting?
That sounds like a great date to do that prior to then asking for a, you know, consideration.
Right?
Yeah, I think that's a great.
Like just start it. That's awesome, okay.
In July? I didn't realize that was specialized, that's awesome.
Yeah, all, all of July, and too, like, if there's any way that you all want us to recognize staff to, like, send that, send that my way. So, we've never done anything like in the past years for it, and.
How many are on the staff for Parks and Recreation right now?
Um, there's seven full-time, and we have sixteen season.
What else? Park signage?
The, the large ones?
Yeah.
Still waiting, um, I, basically, it's probably just public works. And I'm not putting it on them, it's just their capacity to continue to put the rest of them in throughout this type of year when they're streets.
But we have them, right?
All the ones that were budgeted, yes. We still, the original budget did not include Harvest Park, because that wasn't ours at the time. And since that park as well was not in that budget, so that's something we can absolutely go back next year and.
Yeah.
Uh, within the budget process, it's, it definitely in the C I P S that I have already planned, so. I think those would be the last two that we need, um. So Winnick is not up, um. Uh, Centennial is not up, and then, uh, Wellville's not up, but it's poured. On the corner there, so it just needs to get in.
Okay.
We'll wrap that in Wellville when they do the concrete over there.
It'd be cool.
They look nice, that old one is awesome, yeah, the one out here is great too, it's like. That's straight down this street. It's like. Right there.
Okay. Mr. Daily, do you have any?
Uh, attended the ten year anniversary for, uh, Main Street and the Park and Play, um, and I, I have the unique position of now being the liaison for. Main Street program and for you guys, um, so the last meeting I attended was their strategic planning, and they did give a lot of, um. Accolades to throwing an event with strategic partners makes it so much easier and better, and they were really impressed with the performance of that. So, so you guys know, so they literally thank you for that, and they thought that, um, it went great, so, thank you. Uh, I had a great time at the event as well, made me feel like summer, seeing everybody together made me feel so good. Um, I opened the eyes to two trustees tonight for, uh, the World of Pickleball. I don't think they took it seriously before that, and then they saw, uh, like the studies that on, went through, uh. We did the study on Centennial, it's a, the community that did the presentation talking about, um. The demand for pickleball, the sound concerns, the studies they ended up doing. Uh, the resolutions and the ordinances that they ended up placing, they actually did a moratorium on all pickleball. And courts until they could figure out what was going on, and like almost declared a state of emergency based off of. Pickleball sounds, so, um, I, I don't know if it had something that would have been like the significance of pickleball. So, I think we opened their eyes, um, they understood, they kinda looked at what another community did and said, we'd probably do it differently. So I thought that was really cool, cause now they're thinking of like, how should we plan for pickleball, like, what should we do in advance, so that's, that's become like an issue. Um, so I thought that was cool, just opening our eyes to it, and the fact that they were willing and wanting to go to it was pretty cool too. Um, they could have learned more about the First Amendment, but they went to pickleball instead, that was at the same time. That was awesome, um, and then otherwise, uh, my kids are participating in softball. Um, they're gonna continue pretty much the whole team into fall ball. This is the same team that won't play this next year, but the year after that for middle school, and then we'll see these same kids go away from high school. So this is, this is setting up our entire town for the sports and, and community and, and it's just, it's beautiful. To watch and see them be engaged and excited and participate here in town. Um, so I'm gonna say thank you for this opportunity too, so, uh, the kids have grown, we have, we've won one game. I was gonna be like, we don't wanna hear, but we have one. Yeah, um, but it's, it's been quite the journey, and these kids are amazing, so I love being involved in wrecking coaching because. You get to see why we're doing what we're doing, how it actually impacts the kids, so, I love that. Um, otherwise, I'm here, strategic planning starts the second week of July. I mean, I've been, we've been planting information all over the place, but if and when you guys wanna do any final efforts of saying. This is important for strategic, strategic planning, submit the form on the website to contact your board, tell me exactly what you want. I don't care bullet points of, these are the things that are important to us, I will take any input you have, and I promise I will share it and advocate to the best of my ability. So I'm still open and welcome to doing that, um, but the board has heard, heard several times at this point, loud and clear, that a Parks Master Plan needs to happen. It's an existing strategic plan, I think we've been pushing that significantly, but, you know, any extra effort to back that up, I think is appreciated. Um, and then that's the most important thing in my mind that's coming up for the board trustees. Because it will determine and frame all staff actions moving forward for the next two years. Because pretty much the idea is, here's the parameters, this is what we want, this is what's important. Make it be, right? And then we hand it over to staff, ideally, this is how it's supposed to work, we hand it over to staff and they say. Leave in our hands, we're the experts, we know how to do this, so, um, that's where we're about to be mid-July. So it's the most important part of the next two years in my line, for you guys directing the board.
Okay.
So take advantage of it. This is not even just for Parks and Rec and every, this is for anything, if you have any point in the town. Right now is the time to make sure it's heard. Yeah, and that's, that's a one-on-one conversation with me, I'm welcome to. Otherwise, if I can do anything more for you.
Where do you, where do you do, where do you do that again then?
Uh, I mean, the best way to make sure it's distributed to every single person is to send it through the Town of Wellington website, it says, contact your board. So you go to the board trustee page and says, contact your board, and then it automatically sends a, it's a form, and it sends out to every trustee. And town administrator and deputy director, um, so you will know that everyone received it. And you will actually receive a response saying, we have received this, and we are considering this, so.
So homepage. Homepage and then like down here a little lower is the contact button.
There you go, for all you people at home, bam.
Uh, one of my favorite, that's the right person. Yeah, so you tell me what you need me to do, but otherwise, I think you guys have done a great job, thank you so much for presenting at the, the trustee meeting. It was incredibly compelling, I've had follow-up questions from many of the trustees when I'm on, be like, tell me more about what you know about this. And so, it, it, and it was important, so thank you. Yeah, you did a great job there.
Hey, do you guys have anything?
I, yeah, a little bit, first off, sorry I missed your meeting, that's, sorry I missed June fifteenth, like, my whole. Everything's been insane, but we've been building stuff at the park, as we saw that, we're getting, we're pouring concrete on Saturday. Hundred and twenty-five pound bags, or a hundred and twenty-five bags, sixty pounds apiece, come on out. Some muscle, yes. Our go-to gym decided to basically, I don't know, I can't see the title yet, but he's taking the weekends off now, so. That's it, man, so, it'll be a big, big, big day, big day, but yeah, it's going good, so.
That's it, man, so it'll be a big, 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 big day, big day, but yeah, it's going good, so the budget that's probably, that's a. It'd be a thousand dollars, right, and then not much more than that, got a couple, put the orders in, got receipts, all that stuff, so. Just getting to finalize that, um, I mean, health has been great. And then, um, yeah, we couldn't do the event on June fifteenth, I went to California and then the Adidas protein was in Arvada, so basically the whole city went to Arvada on Saturday. Every school was around, was it hurt, so.
Yeah.
I pretty much shut down our events, um.
Oh.
Yeah, it's kind of tough to compete with that. Good day, you know, that's it, that's all, yeah, I'll continue on the, uh, fundraising stuff, keep going on. Fourth of July.
Thank you for being a community ordinance and. That's, that's the worst response.
Concrete is when?
Saturday. Eight AM.
I would come, but I'm otherwise engaged for that.
Don't worry, you see that, let's see, yeah, we got stuff out there, but we'll see how it goes. I wouldn't be as nervous if it wasn't.
Saturday's ball.
Oh, my God. Oh, okay, this is my other update, we have planted a pros member on the trustee's team.
Yep.
For the.
And I'm gonna talk nothing about parks the whole time. So you can, you can guarantee they're gonna hear a little bit about what we're doing. Well, that's also, I was hoping that you might have something for July fourth by the time, um, because it might not be a bad idea to address Mountain Vista about giving a donation. Um, because they're really big with the Wellington community and if they can even just give like a round of golf.
That'd be great.
So if we had something to take to them.
Yeah.
Then a great time to do it.
People love to get on experiences.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So. I'm gonna rush something out, put me, you know? Okay, just a thought. Well, uh, the only reason I'm saying this is. I'm not doing the best, I'll be honest, that's not my forte, so I'll, I'll, uh, I'll see if we can rush it out. We can figure something out, because that's a fantastic idea and I think, yes.
Do you have a question that chat?
I don't.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, I think we have one or two left with the C, but we got a lot.
Oh, that one, not, not the little tiny one that doesn't. Oh, yeah, we'll be out there.
Let's get John Brandon. Get John Brandon, yeah.
Talk about branding my kids, I might as well do it myself.
Oh, my God.
Pros for life.
Does anybody have anything else? I had a question, I've, um, it's my understanding there's possibly applicants?
So far, we won.
Okay.
And it's set up for, even to set it up.
Okay.
Tickets, yeah, oh, well, once it's confirmed, I'll get that out so we can have representation.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. But we're still open, right, tomorrow? Okay.
Two.
We have two.
Two now?
Two applicants, yeah.
Yeah, so one. That will come to interview soon. The other one, I don't know if it needs to be scheduled or not, no.
The only one scheduled right now, but I know two applicants.
Yeah, if we can get them all at the same time, that'd be cool.
Yeah. We're both great.
Okay, awesome.
Good.
I did have one follow-up question for the, for, I can't remember if we talked about it before, for the, um. Disc golf course. When we first set it up, we gave them names, right, it was dangerous stones and we had, uh, it was Kyle.
Griffin Green.
Griffin Green, thank you, are we, um, sticking with that? I know we've talked about updating signage for those, what's the plan?
You need the numbers of parks, um.
I think the whole things you need to imagine too, like.
Yeah.
Almost all, if not most of those will be reworked, so like a new sign for the layout would have to be created and.
Oh, you, do you wanna go, if you look through the pack, yeah, you get the whole sign, like, every, every, uh.
Yeah, every.
Every hole has its own location, so. Names for every hole, the entire thing, I mean. The course was originally Griffin Green, so they helped put it all in, put it all together, I. I feel comfortable keeping that as the name, it's only on one side, so there wouldn't be dangerous.
I think it's dangerous stone, yeah.
But. He's still involved in the process too.
Yeah, I, I think it's great, I just wanna make sure we were following, we're, I mean, we don't have to say anything tonight, just getting everybody's mindset that we could probably address it. Make sure the new signs have it, like, and we're honoring the people that put in so much hard work to, to get this done.
Well, I'm sure if, if we can move forward with the project, that we could set something up at a future meeting where we do a creativity kind of. Um, thing session on, on whole names and course name and, you know, keeping to the true nature of how the personals look together.
Yep.
So, but that, that would be something in the future, we just gotta make sure we're going, let's get going on it first.
I meant that how easy it would be to get like sponsors for each hole, like maybe we could just leave that, so.
Yeah.
That's definitely something to pursue.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have.
I have two things, just because they came up, we talked about a roast logo, we were, so I'm thinking about what we talked about just a few minutes ago. That would be really cool, is there, do we, like, we have the intern, is that something that we can ask? For help with, or, and like, could we get a, um, vote on it or a community vote, can we have a couple options?
Totally, yeah.
I will send you guys the old logo, so we used to have one when we first started. Um, and I'll send it out so you guys can just kind of see what it was, we don't need to stick with it, but it, um, just for reference. Okay.
I say you guys just vote on it, so it's a pros logo.
Yeah.
Let's see what I can.
Some options.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fun. Yeah, that's fun, and then the second thing we talked about is the, um, the park map and a portable version, and I don't, we haven't talked about that today, so.
Yeah, so that will come, um, as previously discussed, when we do the aerial photos.
Yes.
Um, and then as we talked about two last meeting, um, potentially wrapped in a little bit with the, uh. Uh, Safe Rounds to Parks Grant because of the wayfinding and the ability to get to park safely with that organization and their ethos.
Sweet. Awesome.
And no, no specific date, but that grant does have a, a date that we have to have action on, so. It's, we presented, um, Frank Cody presented on that combined option. To be able to be used for the funding from the grant, so we move forward with that after we get pictures, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's it, all right, basically, okay. We can adjourn.